All right, we will now start the Facilities Committee meeting. We're going to start with a courtesy of the floor that's specific to agenda items only. There'll be another one at the end of the meeting for any topic on which the board, I don't know if there's anyone wishing to... All right, then that gets us to discussion items first. I don't know if you have an energy update?
Just a little brief, just to check in on energy markets right now. So just for the board to know that you are locked in on electricity rates through the end of June of 2024. So we're good there. Natural gas is locked in through December of '22, at the end of this calendar year. So in the last six months, when we typically look out to renew that, rates were taken off. So guidance was, I would say low and see how it goes through before the winter. So we make up the winter typically spring and fall is when you want to buy your natural gas because that's when demand is down, the winter and summer's kind of a low period, so it's got prices. So we'll be taking a look here this spring and again next fall, see what the market is and what to do next and extend on that contract.
Any questions?
Yeah, my constituent asked about the solar panels, to what extent they contribute to energy. Is that something you can answer quickly or should I email you?
Just a quick overview, the solar energy we get represents about 10% of our electricity we buy each year. So it's offsetting that much from the grid.
Right, I think that's the big one here now. Okay, if there are any other questions on the discussion items next, you have information items. Any update on our summer '22 projects?
Absolutely, yes, we are gearing up for quite the summer between our HVAC projects for elementary schools and a couple others we will talk about through this evening. The HVAC projects, the contracts getting some minerals in, seeing great progress on that. All of the base stuff has been ordered, we have delivery days on air handlers, chillers, boilers, all those big things that have tripled. So things are looking positive. We don't know yet what that small thing could be.
Positively optimistic.
Positive, positive, positive. So things are tracking. So just as a reminder of those projects we talked about back in November, our end of year schedule will be a little bit different. So just as a reminder for the board that for project running start into the summer, and the summer is looking up, some contractors, we're going to start our after-school work. So after 4:00 p.m., starting May 2nd, we'll come to the building, the hanging out hallways, CMs, that kind of work gets started. Then on the 16th of May, two weeks later, we're going to close the multipurpose rooms, cafeteria, the boardroom area for the school. We'll pull lunches after that point and we have the contractors into those spaces to start doing normal heavy construction in those rooms, all the areas can be safely cordoned off, separated from the school operations and no issues there. And then beginning all up, the last in-person school day would be Wednesday, May 25th at those three schools. And that's Governor Wolf, Fritzburg, and Kalosse. We'll conclude in-person education on that Wednesday. We'll start moving everything that Friday for, that's the holiday weekend, Memorial Day, so Tuesday we'll be in there. Ready roll, full construction, sprint to August the 15th.
I know this isn't so much a facilities question, but those schools that are affected, are there still going to be activities going on like outside for any of here?
In the goal is where hopefully in all of those things, like field day, trips, outdoor type things, those will be going forward. And what wouldn't be, we have some remote things.
Thank you. Just to kind of follow up on that, do we, we still require clearance for anybody whether they're in regular hours or not, correct?
Absolutely, we're going to lose some.
I thought so.
We also have some auditory lighting projects are actually scheduled, they're almost ready to start, had some supply issues, but next week at Freedom and East Hills. I don't want to promise anything, but it's board meeting in these hills because I'm not sure we're quite ready. But if not, in two weeks, for sure, by April, hopefully there's a difference when we have our board meeting at East Hills. But so next week, Freedom system will be upgraded, East Hills will be, Pacific Susan in. But we've done this already too. Indeed, we have some work, a big award coming up here too, so.
Any other questions, open this, this year's summer projects. Then otherwise, we'll have four facilities items on the March 21st regular board meeting agenda. The first one is a bid award for roof repairs and coating of high school.
Yes, this is the other, no big deal, we're just going to do a roof replacement also. Much needed, but Vince Kinnon fantastically in our favor, so we're really excited about that. So we're above the two and a half million, we're going to award this at 1.2 million, fees and contingencies in there also. But it's a great prize, some hungry contractors, doesn't involve some of the supply issues of roof insulation that isn't around. So we got, we had a lot of bids, a lot of interest, so that was very favorable for us.
On the other side of the spectrum, the next one is 4.02 is a rejection of bids for your tennis court repairs, that's premium rate?
Yes, another project of Freedom. The tennis court repair now, the bids for that one came in, we got one bid, which was a plenty. And that price was well beyond our budget, so we are checking with alternative solutions. And we may have recommendations for finance to address that project as well.
All right, the next is 4.03, the third word for renewal of maintenance service and replacement parts for elevators.
Just an extension of our multi-motor arrangement to keep elevators operational.
And 4.04 is a private transportation contract. So we see these periodically, absolutely another one. Any questions about any of those? That brings us back to courtesy of the floor.
Speed and Talus, 7% ridge. I was going through some old papers, ran into a very document which gave important days in Bethlehem's history. And I selected another dates which might be interesting, so. As Monty Python would say, for something completely different. Are you ready for your pop quiz? You ready for your pop quiz?
I just can't believe you quoted Monty White.
It's a closed book, all right. First is, print's very small and shaky. In what year were the first public school classes started? In Bethlehem?
Why not so?
Any yeses? 1880s? Year? Okay, I'm seeing faces that aren't going to give me the answer. They were started in 1828. Next. What year did the school district have its first public school building and what was its name? You should know this. Again, same faces, so I'll give you the answer. The first public school building was opened in 1853 and it was called the NISER School. N-E-I-S-S-E-R, it was in Ravian, Big River. Next. Who was the, oh, this is for the current superintendent.
Is this double jeopardy?
Sir. Who was Bethlehem's first superintendent? What year was he appointed and what was his name?
Having to know this, Jonathan Dumbauer?
Repeat that.
Jonathan Dumbauer, he was appointed.
Well. According to this document, it's saying he was Mr. Mead.
That's what I think.
You agree with that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, what year was he appointed?
That was 1907.
18, I'm sorry, 1883.
Dumbauer, that's right, Dumbauer came in right after that.
So this proves a point. All these things were discussed at a recent pre-K class.
I'm sorry, say that again?
These subjects were discussed as a recent pre-K class. Since you all flunked, it's clear you haven't taken pre-K courses, so that's the time to start. Pre-K classes, ladies.
Anyone want to follow that? Any other courtesy of the floor?
Open the forum, board members? Sure, okay, I did want to mention, so April 25th is the advocacy day in Harrisburg. And I was looking at trying to figure out my schedule to attend, but I know that's probably hard for a lot of us to take a day off and drive to Harrisburg for that. So there is a virtual session, but you don't get, you know, I was thinking if enough of us were interested, power and numbers, we might be able to pull off actually getting a virtual, something scheduled virtually before me. So if you, you know, just think about it, let me know, and if so, I can pursue trying to get us those, at least something scheduled. Because I'm not sure what the virtual side is if you have nothing scheduled, so unless you have something.
I mean, we could schedule something, just, PSBA won't schedule virtual sessions.
Right.
There's no reason we couldn't schedule.
That's what I was thinking, if I could shout with all of us and say, I can make it.
I think that their plan for virtual is just part of the opening and the initial, rah rah, let's go. Beyond that, that's it. But a lot of legislatures, I know of being with Pat Brown in a different group and he refused to do it on Zoom. So I have to go, I'll be going in the office and then other people will be calling in the conference line. So, and I'm sure there's a lot of people like that that just want to get away from Zoom and back to, if you want to see me, come see me.
Well, you can understand that, but that is a lot of vacation days for us to try to get and drive to Harrisburg.
No, and our, the folks who represent our district should be willing to meet with us virtually as the elected board. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, yeah, but if we do need somebody there, I can do that on the table. Okay, okay.
Anyone else for open forum? We have a curricular committee meeting coming, are you going to roll into that?
I think so.
I am adjourned.
We are now adjourned, all right, moving into curriculum. All right, welcome to the curricular committee meeting. All right, first courtesy of the floor for agenda item 01. All right, we will move on then to discussion item 2.01, the elementary math curriculum adoption.
Go someone with the meeting. Yeah, elementary math. Thank you, Dr. Shidney, and here we are back again in our curriculum committee. We keep it moving today through our presentations. Our lead item, the only item for which there was an agenda item, is the purchase of our elementary curriculum in mathematics. It's been quite a while, the curriculum cycle has not addressed elementary math much beyond the intermediate attention it gave it six years ago. Further back than that was the last time we looked at our early mathematics, so kindergarten, first and second grade. So as the curriculum cycle turns and reviews, it's time for elementary math. The goal was to do that next year, but because of some unencumbered funds that exist in our current budget that have been caused by actually good use of the ESRS funds has paid a little bit of the restraints off the budget. So we have the opportunity to advance some of that purchase. We, of course, wanted to make sure everything that we did was very ethic based. We looked at all of different math programs, K to five. And we had a, what we call in the Bethlehem Area School District, a shootout between the vendors, where we had McGraw-Hill, Sendage Math, and Savits, which used to be known as Pearson, which are really the largest vendors in elementary mathematics program large enough to serve a school district that our size. So we brought them in for two different rounds of them sharing their materials and we evaluated them on a variety of topics, not just its alignment to the standards, its rigor, but also how well it connects with our technology backend, how easy it is to implement as far as training. And after two rounds, the math committee, the elementary math leadership team was unanimous in selection of McGraw-Hill's Reveal Math K to five. Reveal Math K to five is a nice balanced program where you will see a lot of explicit instruction in terms of where students have to build their basic skills, but also it balances well the exploratory nature of mathematics where students get the opportunity to explore first and then work backwards to learn the mathematical function at play in those situations. So you viewed that and then we went into negotiations with McGraw-Hill. You may remember McGraw-Hill being a company that does wonders. So I know the, whenever we negotiate price with vendors, the principals don't like that. They like, basically when we talk about the benefits of working with the Bethlehem Area School District, that that's of real value, and it is. So after negotiating the price down a little bit, we were able to get to a place where we can purchase the three-year licenses, all in the instructional materials and the YCC, everything's electronic these days, for the next three years with Reveal K to five. And we would begin our piloting in April and May of this year so that the teachers and teachers have a chance to kick the tires a little more. We'll do the training of our principals in the spring and the summer. And then the curriculum for the professional development package that goes along with the product, we would begin implementing in the fall. So the agenda items for the purchase of that using unencumbered 21, 22 general operating budget funds. And we'll be on our way with our K to five math.
So it's, I'll just add, it's a big number when you first look at it, 562,000, but you divide it by three years, divided by sixth grade levels, K to five, divided by the number of kids, I came down to like 30, 35 bucks a kid a year, which is pretty good. Jack told me the standard, you know, you aim for around 50 bucks a kid a year for implementation cycle, so. It's a good, it's a good deal for us as well.
And a good product.
And this comes with the workbooks, right?
Mm-hmm.
So when we say it's all online, there are the workbooks and math workbooks that the kids use right now.
Any questions, Robles? All right, we'll move on to information items, first question 2.01, the secondary literacy update.
Oh, if it's literacy, I better ask Mrs. Harper to come up here. You've heard a lot over the last five, more than five years about our effort on reading by third grade. So our focus has been largely on the elementary grades, which we're, continued having our emphasis. But our tension now is moving from learning to read to reading to learn. Now we're talking about the secondary, middle school and high school, content area literacy. So in that, if you look to the next slide, you'll see the rationale or justification for that change is just as strong as it was for third grade, whether it's relatively, and these are statistics that are statewide and national, but the Bethlehem Area School District definitely resembles all the national data. Whether it's, you know, four out of 10 students aren't at the proficient level in reading in middle school and high school level, or almost a quarter, almost significantly, multi-years behind grade level. Or the one we see most commonly, if a student isn't a strong reader, they end up in those remedial literacy classes at the elementary community college instead of having immediate access to college credit bearing courses. So long and short of it is, we want students to be able to read that grade level beyond grade three. We want them to be able to read at grade level in every grade level. And that takes them up in our next phase through middle school and high school in the content areas. The next slide is heartbreaking to see that the most problematic misconception that plays to hallways and classrooms of high schools and middle schools is that students and their families are blamed for students not being able to be proficient readers. And that doesn't jive with the best evidence when programs provide the right amount of time, the amount of resources and the amount of incentives for students to be able to make that growth. It is true, there will be some students who will struggle because of the nature of the disability. But our goal is to have, you know, if we want 90, 95% of our students being at grade level by the end of grade three, we don't want much attrition in that number as we're going through the grade levels. Because students need to be college and career ready and grade level reading, especially by the end of high school, is necessary. We want to be able to launch our kids into career pathways and dual enrollment opportunities where they don't get stuck in non-credit bearing courses at community colleges or don't meet the requirements for the applications of a career. So grade level reading becomes more the purview of all the departments, not just the English language arts department. So it'll take a broader effort. The next quote is, well, it's not a new quote, but it's definitely as relevant as it's ever been. And that is, when older students can't read, Louisa Moats is probably the foremost authority on reading science. She said, beyond third grade, poor readers can be taught to read. If the program has all the necessary components, the teacher is well-prepared and supported, and the students are given time, sufficiently intensive instruction and incentives to overcome their reading and language challenges. That sounds like our approach from Wonders from third grade, right? Make sure that we have the right amount of time, the right amount of schedule, the right amount of intensity, the use of data-informed decisions to provide students what they need when they need it, and then continue to monitor their growth. When students are successful, they buy in. And for older students who have had repeated years of not being successful, sometimes they have a heart and shell when it comes to reading. Sometimes it's easier to admit other things rather than you're not a strong reader. So we want to break that and provide that amount of structured time, intensive instruction, incentives to overcome it. And so this year, I mean, it turned over to Mrs. Harper, we've been really working as a ready, set year with our middle school and high school administrators during the entire year. So can you walk us through what we've been doing with them this year and then give us a little snapshot of what our mid-year looked like at the middle level?
Sure, so much as we did with Lincoln where they went first for being in school improvement. Brockle is our proof of concept, they've been going first because of their school improvement status. So they're a little heading their own, but we took this year to wrap in all of our secondary administrators. And we've been meeting with them monthly, they have homework assignment each month, and we have some collaboration around these topics. So just as we do with elementary, right, you have to be able to say the why, and why are we doing this? And we've had our evidence and why we do that. We are focusing a lot on what are the evidence-based practices that will help our students. We are working on being instructional leaders as we go from elementary, it's a big change. And so, you know, there's a lot more teachers and there are administrators, we have to understand, to understand the why, we have to understand the evidence-based practices, and we have to be able to talk to our teachers about that and be confident in that. And then we are collecting data, we're going to look at that in a few minutes, for all of the buildings except Brockle. Right now, we're still in the process of collecting baseline data. We had started doing that in the 1920s school year, and we don't know how that ended. And so this is a reset to get baseline data. We have a multi-year plan, I think that's about it for the next eight to 10 years, it'll be a multi-year plan. Again, we're big, right, so you can't just do every teacher six to 10 all at once in one shot because that does not feel well. So we have that staged over time. And so we're working with our administrators this year, our plan is to have some teacher years next year and we build that base and be excited for the rest of the teachers. On the next slide, we have some data. So sixth grade, those are the rainbows you're familiar with from elementary. The sixth grade assessment is part of the K-6 suite of Acadian's assessment. So it's, the sixth grade assessment is the same as the fifth grade assessment. So they take a, they go read influency, where they read passages for accuracy influency. And then there's what's called a maze passage, which is a short piece of text where every seventh word or so is omitted and there's a choice of three answers that the students have to choose from, so it's a silent assessment, they have to pick the correct choice. And so those are the composite scores there. You can see the district is that top row and then the other schools below. And so maybe there's a school that actually has a little bit of, is Brockle, which is what we, that's what we're doing the work with on the anti-assess process and interventions, and so that's good to see. On the next slide.
I'm sorry, just, hold this for a second, just in the highlight, kind of hard to see. On the, on the top for the district, I'm seeing, correct me if I'm wrong, about 70% of sixth graders at the beginning of the school year are part of the left, upper left. 70% were in the green and blue zone. And then about 70%, 60, 90% are in the green and blue zone. So that shows us a couple things. One, 70%, you know, is, we're, that's a good start, we want to grow those green and blue numbers. The other concern is, this one will grow everybody, but particularly the kids in the yellow, red, and orange ground. So I think the overall picture is, you know, we're starting from a stronger place, but now we can really focus to make those numbers move, because we've noticed if you look down across the schools, not a lot of movement.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Ray. And it's important to note, as Dr. Silver said before, this is why, as we get to middle school, it impacts all content areas because it's not like elementary, where you're with one teacher all day long. So while we still want to look for what intervention students will need, it really is going to take the efforts of everyone. As we know, as kids get older, it takes longer and more effort and more intensity, so close to get. The next two slides will be seventh and eighth grade data, and the numbers are hard to see, so really focus on the red, yellow, green. The assessment is different in seven, eight. It is still Acadian's assessment. We rate seven, eight, now we are, have more of a content area literacy assessment. And it's a gated assessment, so if you were implementing it fully, all students would take the first gate or the first assessment, give a gate one score. Then you would narrow down to some students take the next assessment if they're not showing proficiency. And then the two. And then the two assessments are combined for a gate two score. And then from there, there's yet a third assessment for the smaller population that needs more investigation. At this point in time, Brockle Middle School, we've only schooled in all three gates. And so, what are three gates? The first assessment is a maze, so just like in elementary, you have every seventy words removed with a choice for students. So there's a maze assessment. But what's different is it's not one passage, there's three passages, and one's social studies, one's science, and one's prose. The second assessment is a science reading assessment. And so you read a passage, and then you answer some questions, you know, with a bubble. But again, it's three passages, science, social studies, and prose. So now we're looking across the contents. And then the third assessment is an oral reading, which is different than what elementary has. Again, three passages, science, social studies, and prose. And there are actually comprehension questions that are asked and vocabulary questions. So it's a lengthier assessment. So we have given, based on our conversation with the authors, they told us that since we're trying to gather baseline data, the most accurate thing to do would be give all students those first two assessments, the maze and the summit reading. So three times a year, we give those three assessments and get a gate two score, is what they call it for the conference. So that's what we're showing here. And I think to, to the side a little bit, zoom out a little bit. So at the top level, we can scroll up a little bit, we'll straighten up. There's the district slide. And so, it's not a, I think in middle school. And then you scroll down, Brockle, and he's still on the left side, and then we scroll to northeast.
So no blue?
There's no blue zone in this assessment. They might over time put one in, but normally there's not. And then Richmond and northeast. And so, there's a little aggression. Actually, the one that has a little more green than past is Brockle. So that's, that's good news, because we're doing the intervention there. And then the next slide is the eighth grade, which is the same assessment as seventh, just looking through the whole.
Our baseline is showing that we're holding our own this year. Which, given the circumstances of the previous two years and this year, there hasn't been a fall off. There's definitely room for improvement. So we're not starting low, 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 we're starting okay, but we're sort of flat in our group class. Which is a good place to be to start to develop your self-growth. And as Kim said, the area where we've seen the most little sprouts coming up out of the ground of reading has been at Brockle, where they've had a lot of the strategies and familiarity with the assessments already. So much, much work to come here, much work. But I want to thank Kim and the literacy team. Their, the secondary principals are getting ready, they're owning their data, they're seeing where their students are. Next step will be getting those teacher leaders so that they can interpret and use that data. And as those years go by, hopefully we'll be keeping all of our students at grade level so we won't present all those statistics that you saw from this presentation.
I just have a stupid question. Does the assessment get more difficult as the year goes on?
It's a grade level assessment, so the score band goes up, what you're expected to hit goes up. So it's not as easy to just look at a raw score and say, well, I got a fifty-two in the fall, I got a fifty-four in the winter. So yay, yay, I grew, because they do their math calculations, and so the band goes up, but they're expected to today.
Just so that if, if students stay the same, if the pie charts stay the same, two hundred percentage breakdowns, that reflects them making progress.
Yes, yeah.
So it's sort of step by step. If the pie starts to get greener, or then that means they're exceeding the expected parameters.
We will want to see more green as the year goes on.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. We'll move on to information item three point zero two, the middle school and high school math coaching and tutoring update.
So we mentioned earlier about, now I just, your Jane needs to join you at this time. We were talking earlier about our elementary math and curriculum changes there. We've had our curriculum changes and development with envision math at the middle school and high school over the last few years. And thank you for coming. But like the literacy coaches from last time, we invested using ESRS funds, math coaching resources. And if you hear our math teachers, they are saying it's, the hill is just as steep as it is in reading. So math coaching and math tutoring, the role is to sort of stop the slide, intervene now, give the tools to the teachers and the students that they need to be able to capture and grow, and then build on that. So we included that in our ESRS, but since we had our language arts coaching before class, we kind of wanted to give the opportunity for math coaching.
There's some quiz right with this math, is there? So as you can see, what we have displayed on screen there, the context here is that VAS to secondary math to the teachers' levels were relatively stagnant prior to pandemic. And so the pandemic courses provide additional weighters of challenge to teaching complex, and to control the concepts. And so, well, teachers and administrators last year expressed a real serious interest in some additional supports to address the learning gaps and establish a path to improve the overall achievement. So we use the term hard and lost it. You know, sometimes it's not lost one, but learning issues from here have gotten half in the first class.
With that being said, we said, what should we do? And we went to the research, and you can see we've listed two studies that we've kind of sat on the shoulders of giants, I'd say. And first being, you know, looking at the professional coaching, which is well-respected and considered a high-quality learning opportunity that is embedded in the school day for teachers. We're accessing high-trusted colleagues within the building who are providing professional development to their peers. Again, it's integrated into the teacher's school day. It's a nice alternative to the traditional professional development. And we can see here it has large positive effects. As we discussed last week, or last month, I should say, with literacy coaching, which we observe success in with the elementary level. It begins with, you know, walking into a classroom, observing what's happening, providing that teacher with feedback, and then having some early meaningful discussion.
And also with research on our tutoring programs. We did a lot of research, and one we cited here is a very powerful one. In two thousand twenty meta-analysis of ninety-six randomized controlled trials, a kind of study that high-quality, high-dose tutoring offers the potential for transformative activity. The thing that we saw at the end of that in our research is that the programs that work the best and have the greatest impact are those that occur during the school day. So not an after-school homework book, that ends during the school day as part of the writer's schedule, directly tied to the grade level instruction we're teaching with those.
So as we stand on the shoulders of giants of some research, we have two overriding objectives. First, to utilize instructional coaching to foster growth and provide meaningful feedback to teachers within the school day. And also provide high quality to be able to teach to students during the school day to accommodate for that learning gap.
And so we have a description of what we've done so far this year, as well as our plan for the second semester. So in the fall, we continued the work, fortunately, you know, Kim had mentioned some of the work that started at Brockle Middle School, a couple of years ago. We started working with the math teachers at Brockle Middle School, three years going on. And so this year, as per plan, that work continued in all four middle schools. But at the high school level specifically, in the inner precinct of our, people did it too. Hope Freedom Liberty High School implemented math instructional coaching. So with me here tonight are Jennifer McCollough and Elizabeth Vincent, Betsy Vincent, who will be speaking in a moment. And they were specifically put in on assignment for the purpose of instructional coaching. In addition, we also had Taylor Bennett, and Shulzer Peter Gambergen, and Emily Wood, who were, worked for the tutoring effort specifically. In addition to that, we did use Math Solutions, which is a group that we have consulted with with our elementary principals for some math training. And they have been supporting the coaching work. And as well, you know, the thing that we have to, you know, all plans are great until reality is, unfortunately, we didn't realize, I don't think any of us, the education, are bad in staff and short TV this fall, when we were planning on a year ago. So we had some handouts and some obstacles as far as the gaming things off the ground with staff and short juice, but those problems are resolved, and we're looking forward to full tilt for the second semester. But before we talk about second semester, we'd like to introduce our two coaches that are there and have shared some of the highlights from the coaching that happened so far this fall.
I'm Jennifer McCollough, this is my fifteenth year at VASD. I am built by Bethlehem, actually, I'm a two thousand two graduate at Freedom High School. I have a daughter that is at Governor Wolf from the district. And I am the Freedom High School Instructional Math Coach. So sharing a few successes that we had, implementing new ideas into the classroom can be overwhelming, but having a coach as a partner aids the teacher in accomplishing their goals.
Good evening, I'm Elizabeth Vincent. I'm the math coach over at the Green High School. I've been in the district for about twenty-two years now, first as a substitute, and then I taught math over at East Hills Middle School. And now I'm at Liberty. So educators are always trying to perfect their craft, and coaches become valuable partners in this endeavor. And focusing and honing skills, providing a sounding board for content and reciprocal discussions, providing framework for improvements, and much more of that. On the tutoring side, we have some Algebra One students who thank us for reviewing concepts that they struggle with, for taking the time to listen to their thinking, and we direct them so that the connected concepts are easier to understand.
And the last week, there have been a lot of aha moments with students. They have expressed their appreciation of being able to take a step back in order to understand the concepts more deeply.
So then for the second semester, now we've resolved our staffing situation. We've got the coaches and the tutors fully in place. And so in the second semester, the middle schools will continue to receive the support they've been receiving all year, with the same consultancy that we've been using for the last several years at that level. And then obviously, Betsy and General continue their coaching work at both high schools. And then Tamar, which was with Taylor, I believe is here this evening, as well as the other two, who've been there. What is new for the second semester is we already started working, we had two visits so far with Jason McGarry, who is the person who provided that high-quality coaching that started in office a year ago. And he's coming in second semester to work with both regular education and special education tutors, specific student-centered strategies to use in those two early reading sessions. It's been very, very positive, and I'm very happy for you. So we're very excited, thank you for the opportunity to talk with the Department of Education, and we're expecting great results.
I have a question. From working out with our kids, can you see learning symptoms, common issues, that we could go back and revise curriculum or how we approach them? Are there common problems or certain topics, was it across the board?
Actually. I just figured not for a long night, second.
We focused on Algebra One in Texas, instead of having tutors covering a large number of different courses or different levels, we picked the area that seemed to have one of the highest need as far as student understanding or misunderstanding. And it's one of our largest section classes, so. And plus, if you're successful in Algebra One, that's the gift that keeps giving in other higher-level classes. So what Mark was talking about, provide the intensity and the job embeddedness, focus adjusting that in a little while.
With the data mention tracking, are you following then what progression of understanding the concepts the students have? Or do you plan to do this as they advance into further, as Dr. Silver was mentioning, they go into calc or, you know, so?
Well, so as Jack said, Algebra One, math is even more so, or certainly felt that in the days of high school math teacher, more so than other stuff, is very much on the net. Mastery of those early concepts, in this case Algebra One, is really the foundation of all of the high school mathematics, with some exceptions in geometry, because of the different style of reading, but it's very, very important. So we did focus on Algebra One for that reason. And so, yeah, it's, you know, it's definitely a challenge. But one of the things we wanted to do as a strategy is, it's easy, and a lot of districts have done, and I know that I've been a part of this, this before too, where any help is flawed is good. And that's true, and especially about, let me help you read a whole, let me see if I can, when you need to reteach a lesson, that maybe you can understand the day. And we realized the purpose of, the very targeted approach to this tutor learning is, rather than trying to fix instruction that didn't work for the child in class that day, let's close the learning gaps that are going to prevent that student from fully accessing and understanding the materials they're dealing with. So just in time teaching, if you will, so that what the coaches and what the tutors have done specifically is say, okay, we know we're teaching linear equations and equations, solving equations and variables in those terms. We know the prerequisites of skills to that, but we're not skills in terms of working with their special type of. So what the tutors do is, knowing that Thursday's lesson is on this particular review for Dr. Morgan Gaffield, or Brady, or make sure we're reteaching, make sure the students have that skill securely. And very importantly, that the students feel that, feel that sense of confidence as they probably do that and experience, yes, I'm familiar with this, because I was just with, you know, I just relearned this, or I just got some refreshers on this. And so, sort of like an just-in-time approach.
Well, maybe I should rephrase the question then. As the students gain more confidence in these math skills, are you putting into place measures that can possibly attract more enrollment in higher-level math because their confidence is built, so they're wanting to advance more math courses as they progress through their high school years? That's my question.
So annually, we monitor, for instance, our AP Calculus, our AP Statistics, enrollment, our scores. But that also stands for all of our math courses, at all levels, at all grades. So I do think we have been collecting historical data, and we can continue to collect that information moving forward to track how are students progressing through math.
Yeah, I think in terms of long-term data collection, it would be nice to see that general increase of confidence from the students. You know, I've heard so many, oh, I don't know, pre-calc, I really stunk at algebra, right? So it would be nice to see that this program helps establish much longer-term confidence in a student's ability to learn and to understand the concepts.
I would love to see that happen eventually. But the original, the genesis of this is to prevent students from failing Algebra One and hitting a dropout rate. So there's, I mean, that's a very important goal eventually. But the students who tend to take pre-calc or calculus are not the students who generally have difficulty with algebra like high school students.
But you're not doing calc students.
But students who hit the wall as far as what they view their confidence is, is most likely to happen when you're over age taking algebra in high school. Build success theirs, they stay in school.
Another question?
I can answer mine.
And there is something, when students first hit with that, that a letter could mean a number. And when you put a number over a letter, and all that kind of, just having access to somebody who they know can help explain that or be there, as opposed to just feeling stupid that you couldn't do your homework, or you're just, you know, you give up or something like that. You have that degree, handholding with somebody, we do coaches, and they're nice people as well as coaches. You have an opportunity to feel like you can stay in the game. And the same with teachers. When teachers have students that are frustrated like that, they may not know all the strategies that they know. And to be able to go in and co-teach, or model, or collaboratively plan, or observe part of a lesson, sometimes that's all the difference that a teacher needs to be able to have the confidence to reach out to that student.
Thanks.
Thank you.
When you're talking about like the eighth grade Algebra One students then, are they part of, they don't, that's where I was kind of answering my question? And then, so they're more, okay, so we're not as concerned.
I was just sort of bringing this to the down conversation about these two sort of strategies that you're stressing here and that we've got here on other category ideas of teacher coaching, sort of in real time, effectively like professional development as the days go on. And tutoring for students, similar kind of idea of sort of in the moment as things go on and that. Whether it was new curriculum being implemented, sort of support for teachers as that was rolling out, whether it was literacy, whether it's math. And I'm just curious in general, sort of how much of this is the luxury of having some additional dollars that we're able to spend and allocate long time, like teacher time to these roles? To fill in the gaps that you've left behind as you're doing these coaching positions? And how important these kinds of things are to keep in mind going forward, even if ESR dollars start to fade? Because every presentation we heard that's focused on coaching, that's focused on tutoring, and being really strategic and deployed, both teachers and students in these ways, have sounded just incredibly successful. You know, in the way that the adults and the kids in the room feel and also the outcomes they get. And so I just...
We probably could just define our budget for a discussion going ahead. It really is, it's gonna be, that's, you know, this year we still have the ESR fund, next year we still have the ESR fund. But going forward, we're gonna have to make decisions about how much of that, assuming there's no more ESRs projected, but it'll be, you know, how much of this we decide, well, we want it included in our general operating budget, which means, you know, we take on that cost as opposed to having the ESR funding. So those would be, we're gonna begin those conversations, this budget, even though it doesn't impact us, does mean next year. But we need to think about it for the out years and maybe be strategic about it. Yeah, I think the two most impactful things that districts can do, one is around the literacy work we're doing, the explosive literacy instructor, science-based, two is the coaching. And so now we do have that luxury and so we'll be in the tough position of saying, how do we manage to do this going forward when that one's not there? So that's why these guys are convinced us that we can never do without it.
Hence the benchmark here to collect data, see where the successes are, see where the greatest needs are. Will evidence and data drive our decisions?
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to, I remember point two three, the social emotional learning coaching update.
Here's some more. All right, well, you can coach on how a sentence is designed or how do you spell words, I spell my darts. Or you could coach and see how students learn best in mathematics, algebra. And there are also the challenges of students coming in and the behavior that they present to the teacher that leads to challenges in classroom management. And as you know, effective classroom management is the number one factor leading towards successful classrooms in terms of achievement. So part of the ESRs fund, we divided last, remember last year when we had ESRs one? Sort of divided into the academic areas, which is coaching and the tutoring and language arts and math and tail. And also on the pupil services side as far as social emotional learning. So that team is led by Mrs. Hopkin. And so it's their turn matter of on the social emotional side of the coaching that's been going on. You know, if there's a need to learn, behave, math and reading, there's as much learning to be done in behavior.
So good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity. As Dr. Beck Bulley talked about, the need for social emotional coaches, coaching and tutoring in the academic area, it is true with the early behaviors and with the early social emotional learning, our kids, especially coming off the pandemic, coming back to school five days a week, kids learning the academics, getting back into the routines. So we came up with the idea of social emotional learning behavior coaches. And here tonight is the Resnet Director of Special Education and Tracy Turner, Supervisor of Social Emotional Learning, to talk specifically about our social emotional learning and behavioral coaches, so.
And our coaches are good.
Oh, yes. So I'm gonna ask them to stand so ones who are here. So our behavior coaches came from the ranks of our teachers. And they really are a broad representation of different types of teachers and counselors. So we have Jen Hurdy, who is, was an emotional support teacher at Liberty High School. Carla Erdman, who's an English teacher at Freedom High School. Megan Stocker, who was a social education teacher at East Middle School. We have Megan Coulter, who's an English teacher at Northeast Middle School. Alicia Bean, who is a guidance counselor at Spring Garden Elementary. And Alexa DeRaymond, who was an emotional support teacher at William Penn Elementary School. Sean Brad, who was a reading specialist at Dunedin Elementary School. And Kristen Jacoby, who's an English teacher at Liberty High School. So we really had the opportunity to have a nice diverse group of teachers to help us in this endeavor. So this graphic is a little different representation of what we showed you in the past of our social emotional learning triangle. And the reason we switched it up a little bit in the way it looks is we're really, and behavior coaches are such an integral part of this. We're making a purposeful attempt to really integrate our social emotional learning and behavioral interventions with what we do academically. What we do as a school district is all based around our academic interventions. So if you think about our behavior interventions, our social emotional learning as the plate and a mode to which we can deliver content and purposely integrating that, this is a lot of the work that our coaches do. So at the core level, they're taking a look at intermediate distorted practices and they're, as they're coaching with kids and teachers, they're embedding that into the frameworks that exist. Then when you look at the more targeted approaches, things like second steps and zones of regulation and our SAP processes, which are highlighted on the arrow on the left. They're side by side with our SAP teams. They're, they're teaching about data collection to our teachers, to our school counselors, to our district administrators, and really building capacity there so that we can really get targeted intervention strategically for kids. And then what they really do best is when they're one on one with kids, that most intensive support. And through a gradual release model, starting first to model and then to do that intervention with the teachers and then eventually to release that to just the teacher level. And so when you put it all together, it's really amazing work that you're across the district.
Sorry, can we go back to that for a second? Because you did such a great job with the new graph, you know, we're all about framework. If we can't reduce it to something like this, we can't do it, so. But if you look at the course of support, I just wanted to mention, you'll see, and this is what Tracy mentioned about the integration of social emotional with academics. You'll see if it corresponds to the other things we talked about, instructional coaching, grade level content, content area literacy, RBG three. So it's integrated here.
Question as well? So is this where with things based on the conversations I've been having in my own house, two middle school kids, like current events, not pandemic, but more other, like, is this kind of something too that you're helping the teachers know when maybe some of the concerns or the conversations, like, when to have those conversations, when to get help with those conversations? I mean, I don't know if you're seeing that or if I just have a particularly concerned sixth grader, but...
I think that behavior coaches, they, as we go through the presentation, you'll see they work with classroom teachers, K as well. So sometimes they're in a whole group conversation and maybe a topic like that comes up. And they have the experience and the resources to be able to assist those teachers in those conversations if they do come up. Just to piggyback on that, so an example of what's happening across our middle level in particular is working with the SAP teams and ten sleep, the school counselors alongside the administration or behavior coaches. And they're in those meetings, so they're getting the firsthand account of all the student issues within the building. And so those meaningful conversations about, what do we hit whole class, what do we hit whole grade level, what do we hit individualized or targeted, those conversations are happening in every bird.
Can you maybe look at that graphic and think of MTS as multi-tiered system of support? And that's the same academically as it is in social emotional intervention. Green is like grade level, everybody gets it, that's school-wide, class-wide, hey, everyone's green, you like that? And then with, as the data show, that's not enough for that child, whether it's reading or it's behavior. It goes to another level where the, where the support is more intensive. And then the data show that it needs more, you go to the next level. So that's a reading difficulty, that's a behavioral difficulty, that multi-tiered system of support is the Bethlehem way of doing things.
So the question of why do we need behavior coaching? We know kids need to be able to read and do math, but we were hoping that they just had that behavior and that teachers would be able to do that in their classroom. But when students return to in-person instruction, five days a week, they really did have a different behavior expectation when they were at home. And getting back into the group of things was something that was going to change for them, particularly because they moved from home to half the class size to a full class size. The strategies that teachers used prior to the pandemic didn't work as well as we'd like because they had that consistency before and with that gap in their learning, it changed how teachers had, had students coming to them. The academic pill was considerably harder because of the amount of time that students weren't in face-to-face instruction. Mental health concerns had increased significantly over the time of the pandemic. And during the time that we did have the ESRs fund and some other things come in, we have a lot of great resources and the opportunity to help our teachers to be able to use those resources, this was like that in, in job coach, coaching for those resources. So when, when people ask, what, what are the behavior coaches, what do they do? They really do quite a lot. They, they collect data about our students. So when we have students who are struggling in the classroom and we need to do functional behavior assessments to see what the antecedent is, what happens right before the behavior, as well as the consequences, what happens right after. Sometimes it's really hard when you're trying to manage a whole class. And our, our behavior coaches are able to collect that data and then also be able to analyze it with the teachers. They're also part of our SAP teams, so they are not just collecting data and doing functional behavior assessments. They're just doing observations and contributing to the conversation that way. But because they have so many strategies and they've got so much vast experience, they're able to contribute to the conversation about how we intervene. So we're not getting to the point of adding to our special education ranks unnecessarily. They're lead learners. They're part of the distorted practices lead leadership trainers. They're part of our check and connect. They learn about SEL strategies and then they share that out with the teachers. They are definitely collaborators with faculty and staff and with teachers. And they're problem solvers. We, the beginning of this school year, we had quite a few students who really struggled to come back into school with the, they were eloping, they were little kindergarten, you know, trying to get out of the classroom. They just, they weren't accustomed to the school environment. And having these experienced people to come in and work with teachers was a huge benefit for the teachers and the principals. They're, they're also the mentors in that, that coaching is to be able to help the teachers to be able to start in, in bringing this into their own practice. So when they do have a student who comes in who may be struggling, then they have the tools and they have the skills the next time someone comes around. They work individually with students and with groups of students. They are actually taking some of that responsibility as well. They have small groups of zones of regulation. They set goals with students. We'll have a couple of students who will speak at the end of this who you'll see. They really like these behavior coaches. And they're teachers. They teach, they teach the things that our teachers are teaching so that they can have that shared experience. So instead of us talking, we have a couple of videos of other people talking. So this is Mr. Ramada from Governor Wolf Elementary School.
Our behavior coaches have supported a school system that had to come back from a global pandemic. And the impact of the trauma that pandemic alone has helped our students be emotionally ready to comprehend, to learn and become active members of our school community. The behavior coaches this year have come in, worked one-on-one with teachers, coaching teachers on social emotional learning and, and strategies that they can put into their school. I've seen that here, zone, zones of regulation, working with teachers, working with students on implementing those zones, coaching teachers on how to do that. So we have small groups running, we also have work with parents. They have been integral in our work and I've been proud of them. And I don't think I could have gotten through the start of the school year without the support of the behavior coaches. And I think moving forward, we really should look at their impact and how, if we want instruction to happen and we want kids to be focused and ready and we want their learning brains on, we have to continue to teach them regulation skills so that when they get that survival brain and that survival brain is operating, the behavior coaches can come in, work with students and teachers to get a child's learning brain back on. Our behavior coaches have supported...
So it, so the way that the behavior coaches are deployed into the classroom, this is kind of the, the road to the happy classroom with the arrow at the end, as you can see. So we have a kiddo who might be having a rough time. The behavior coach comes to the classroom, conducts some observations and works with the team to design interventions and strategies for the referred student. But then the conversation may turn to how the overall classroom management strategies are occurring and the opportunities to incorporate the SEL with a tier one for all of our students. Because sometimes those things are missing too. Because when they have that tough student, it's easy for those things to kind of go by the wayside. So then the behavior coach models strategies to use with the referred student as well as the whole class. And then the teacher eventually starts to take on more responsibility. It's nice to be able to watch it first. It's the I do, we do, you do model in behavior coaching. And then finally, the classroom teacher gains confidence and the behavior coach just checks in to support and adjust the strategies as needed. And then the academic time is regained. And that's really the, the main point of having the academic, the behavior coaches. And then there's that happy little class over there. It's like bam, six steps we're done. So in, in the fall, we had a very difficult situation with a family that had multiple students. There were 12 in all, who, who needed to be placed into foster care. And when the, the family, the students were in the school that they were in, it was just not a good match. So we decided to move the youngest, the five youngest to Marvine Elementary School. And Mr. Fontenaz opened, opened his doors and opened his arms to these wonderful, wonderful kids. But it was a real challenge because we had students who, again, were eloping, they were really struggling. And he just shares a little bit about his experience with the behavior coaches during that time.
We, we haven't used our SEL coaches in our specific case that we had, where we had a few students that moved in and they were going through a very traumatic event. And to see our SEL behavior coaches come together from different schools and all meet here at Marvine to support the, the students that transitioned here was truly amazing. They were here daily. They created a schedule so that someone was here to check in on the students so that the students have a familiar face to see every day. And, and they, the progress that those students have made over the past few weeks has been amazing to the point where now the SEL coaches are back to their normal buildings. And we just have our one who's still here to check in with them. But if it wasn't for them, I don't think these students would make the time as that they did.
So I'm not gonna read the quotes to you, you have them. But we, we've gotten so much feedback this year from our coaches, our principals. In the 23 years that I've been in the school district and in all the different roles that I have been in, this is the most feedback that I have gotten from teachers or from, I have parents who are coming and, and talking about our principals. And it's all levels, it's K to 12. It looks slightly different in each of the levels, but it's the same idea that people feel supported. They, they were worried about coming back and, and having kids come from all of these different environments. And this has provided some of that security. And it also, you know, in the years that I've been doing special, the beginning of the year is always tough. So the fact that it wasn't as tough, even after all of that, was, was pretty impressive. And I attribute it to the work that, that the... And I attribute it to the work that the ladies have done. One more. So this video, I think, is the ending video. And I think it's the one that's most important because it's the feedback from the kids. That it's a bit short, but, and they're very sweet, so here you go.
How have the behavior coaches helped you this year?
Depuzzles.
Depuzzles, okay. What has the depuzzles been for you?
I like completing them because it makes me feel good.
Okay, and it helps you to calm down, I know, when you're upset.
When we enjoy to do it together.
So this way you're having fun with a friend?
Yeah.
And you're learning a coping skill?
Yeah.
Because when you're feeling upset, what color are you?
Um, white.
Right. And what color do we want to be?
Green.
And here we go.
Yeah.
Okay, can you tell me that? What did, what did we do to help you?
Calm down.
Go to calming corner? Do to help you?
Calm down.
Calm you down, okay. What's a way that you learn to calm down? Say it again?
Learning and draw.
Okay, learning to draw. Because when you're drawing or coloring, that's one of your coping skills.
My name is JJ. I train for Tabista Sabraco and I'm in sixth grade. Mrs. Stocker is a behavior coach. She helps me with, she helps me for two schools. And she helps me like listen to teachers and from like sitting down, staying in my class. And my teachers help me and Mrs. Stocker helps me. And she just lets me help me draw. She helps me like do math and that's it. Thank you.
There's one word. The kids really have been extremely responsive to it as well. And, you know, the kids that you were seeing there, I mean, they have their difficult moments. Lots of our kids have their really difficult moments. But the ability to articulate and to be able to say that they are learning to calm down, that they are learning how to get to read and to do math and do all of those things really is pretty important. So those are some pictures, some tweets, that I'm very appreciative of the experience that I've had working with the behavior coaches. I know that Tracy is as well, and we're glad that we had the opportunity to share.
Questions?
So just hearing like with Mr. Fontanaz, how like the team descended on Marvai. Knowing how many kids need help and need assistance, how many kids is this program able to reach? Well, the way that we started this school year is that we loosely link the behavior coaches to various schools. So there's four in elementary, two in middle, and two in high school. But we started the year with the idea that we will go wherever we need to go. So we do reach all of the schools, all of the kids, all of the people that are in need. Are there days it's a little crazy? Yes, like when those kids moved and we had five of the behavior coaches over the course of like the weeks to take different times. Sure, there were some kids who we may not have gotten to, but they always figured out a way to connect and things like that. So right now, the eight people are covering the whole K to 12, all the 22 schools. So the feedback we've gotten at, so you're at, you can, and you're dealing with Joey. And Joey's a handful. At what point in time does this team kind of, for lack of a better term, tap out? And he moves to the next tier because, like, no offense to Joey, needs all the help in the world. Not at all. Right, so with the special education, yeah, with the special, so the tiers, okay, for the elementary are special education tiers. There's no other tier beyond special education. So that's why their involvement in the SAP process and that full intervention process, because they are, and they can share, they have come to us and said, hey, we really need something else for this other student. How are we going to be able to make this happen? So they're very savvy when it comes to the whole process, to the SAP process. But yes, so for elementary, yes, we, and we, I would say there's probably about, out of the kids that they've worked with, we've had to place probably 15, 20 kids in different placements. But it wasn't because we didn't know that we didn't do what we were supposed to. We did it because we knew that we had their support in place.
I just wanted to comment too, that the coaches are excellent at keeping an eye on, yeah, they're deployed initially to this high-level behavior, but they always have a systemic lens of what do we do to build capacity school-wide? So if they realize, okay, this teacher assistant is helping me work with this student, you know, we needed to teach him this, this, and this, data collection measure, who else in the building needs that? So let's pull them together, let's make sure that we build additional capacity. So that's how the routine work is than just maybe the one job specifically assigned to us.
He is a handful. You made up on that?
Like some of the other coaches that we've had, I assume all these teachers are out on full release on special assignments, there's people filling in the backend. And like our English coaches, our math coaches, these are some of the best of the best that we have in their roles. How are we making sure there's no gaps on the backend? And not to pick on anybody, but emotional support teachers build bonds with students and when they're not in the building, they are not the same. Has there been any issues with these folks being in this new role and we're just filling them with long-term subs that aren't working?
Well, actually, when we did, we backfilled them back. So Alexa DeRaymond, who is one of the emotional support teachers, who is fabulous, she's also a board certified behavior analyst, trained to be. And when we lost an emotional support teacher, not her, not her backfill, her backfill was great. We lost another emotional support teacher and Alexa stepped into that role for quite a few months. So we've been operating not really with eight the whole year because when needed, they've gone back into their roles. Special education teachers, not that English teachers aren't hard to find, but they're a little bit harder to find sometimes. But what we've done is, is that not only have the special education people coached just behavior, they're also coaching their replacements. So this has been a really good pipeline for our special education department as well because we brought in some really positive staff and then been able to support them in ways that I typically wouldn't have been able to just, you know, with this, with that this program.
Yeah, because I think of like, I look at Carlin and George, who's the English, you know, the Freedom English Department, like those are the two names, I think, but no offense to anybody else there. They've been there forever in those roles and have leadership positions and have both of them as coaches. Just want to make sure we're not losing anything on the backend. Not that this isn't, I mean, shouldn't be one of our most important focuses.
That was one of our concerns in the spring as we started to look at interviewing. So that was always in the back of our mind, how can we backfill to make sure that we weren't putting a hole in the English department, but yet being able to meet our needs as well.
All right, thank you. And thank you to all our coaches for stepping up.
Just a more of a systemic question, that, you know, there's been such an incredible network of support for the inside of the school system, for coaching, and for students. This is kind of a big can that I'm afraid to open, but I need to. What kind of, what kind of connection is outside the school for family development, for social services support, for information sharing with any agency outside the school?
I can answer from the behavior coach side. I'm sure that they can answer more from the other piece. But from the behavior coach side, part of SAP process is getting involved with the outside agencies and connection with our resources, so counseling resources. And I can speak to students they've been involved with. They've connected to food banks, they've connected to counseling, they've connected to all of those things. And the SAP process is really all-inclusive with that. So their participation in that has that student side of it as well. And I think by the nature of who we have as coaches and then being as involved and engaged with families, these coaches have been in meetings with families, whether they be IUP meetings or SAP meetings. They've had conversations on the phone, they've tag teamed when parents are talking with teachers to coach the teacher on how to have some of those difficult conversations. So I do believe that their impact is very strongly in the school and the academic, you know, the classroom setting, but it definitely is pushing out to the community.
Well, I think when you talk to your question, systemics, is if a behavior coach is working intensely and helping out with these situations, then you've got to look at, well, wow, all of a sudden our counselors can be connecting with families and other resources when they're in community schools. So it's allowed them to be able to do more of that community-based work so that they're not picking up the phone and having to run classrooms all the time. They're still doing that. But the coaches have really helped in that regard. But we always have a lens on that sustainability piece. The coaches, it's not unusual for them to say, hey, we found this resource, will we immediately, you know, push that out across counselors and administration so that the event passes between the buildings?
But then a follow-up, just wondering, when you're out, when the teachers and the coaches are working with family units, where's the line where there's just, there's only so much service that you can't, and you shouldn't be saying, hmm, your parenting is a little weird, but, you know, where's the line there? And do you also have that awareness of boundaries? I mean, I would be so concerned that, you know, there's an emotional burden with some of our troubled kids. And so that plus working with other agencies, there's, you know, helping the kid in this environment, but they kind of go back to this other environment. You want to fix that environment.
But that's when collaboration comes into play. So we're constantly collaborating. The behavior coaches are collaborating with the support center around the ancient those buildings. Just because the behavior coaches involved doesn't eliminate that child being able to access those services. So it's that collaboration. And then, like Tracy said, talk, looking at what services are out there that we can then hook up there. And I think one of the nice things that has occurred this year is that every Friday, almost every Friday, they have the opportunity to get together as a team and to be able to talk and to be able to collaborate and consult with one another. So they've been a source for that, for one another as well.
The way that behavior coaches are one piece, the depuzzles, we still have our entire special ed department, emotional support teachers, psychologists, and so forth. And then beyond that, and I think we were getting to that way, was the outside, like, right, because we can't, we do a lot. But we have our partnership with the parent family answered, communities in schools, they have the health networks, they have the higher need mental, all offered onsite at the school. So we've built this, we've cleared for support for their folks to build out this systemic approach to providing resources that didn't exist. Social emotional resources didn't exist a few years ago. And we, you, are investing a lot more money in that. Some of this from grants, some now is through the SRS. But even before the pandemic, we went from investing basically zero in social work, with contract with social workers, to probably a million dollars a year across all these schools and providing services. Some we pay for, some we don't. But I think that's a good question, we don't need to hand it off because there's got to be things happening beyond us.
It's a fine balance, I believe, in the sense of that we can provide parents with resources, right? But ultimately, if it's outside resources, they have to take that step. And we can provide that support to help them access. But if they don't, it doesn't mean that we don't stop working with that child and try to make them more successful.
So with this work, and you're obviously tracking, because you're a daily leadership leader, do you find that incidence of suspension for behavior problems or, you know, expulsions or any type of these disciplinary issues, do you find that is tracking down here as well? Or is it too soon to?
It's too soon. I mean, last year, we had very, very little. But, yeah, very little. But I think, I think what we're seeing first is the individual student because just like that happy class is at the end of the road. Right now, we're really on the individual and getting the teacher to be able to work with the individual students. So do I think we're doing really great work for those kids? Absolutely. But in order for it to be systemic, it's going to take a little bit longer than the semester we've been doing it.
The reason why I want to keep an eye on that is when the funding runs out. The points need to be able to show some kind of evidence of value in these reduced punitive measures that would then gain public support to sustain the funding needed to continue the service.
Absolutely.
And one of the challenges this year has been that, there's, I've described it as there's firefighting in the world. If there's a fire, you've got to get the fire and put it out in that classroom. But then we really want coaching, and the year of all the other being math and literacy is for capacity building. And so we've been able to do less capacity than, oh, because there were so many big fires. Hopefully, as we get things in place, over the next year, it will be a little smoother than this year, we can get to the capacity building even more.
And the reinitiation of the leader of the new concerted practices and building that capacity in the buildings more will help build that capacity across all the different classes.
So I've enjoyed everything, I was listening before I came in. And I, but I do have some questions. So I remember when co-teaching was a big part of this world. See, we're not really doing that in that same way anymore. But I remember one of the things that I've noticed as an outsider working at school was that depending on who your co-teacher was, it worked or it didn't. This leads me to a real question I'd ask. How are we, or in what ways are we making sure that the behavior coaches, what ways are we making sure that they're welcome, supported, wanted, frankly, in those rooms?
That was really important when we started this whole journey. And the way that I think that has, I, we haven't had anybody complain about them being there because it's student-driven, teacher-directed. So everybody wants help when a kid keeps running out of your room. Everybody wants help when your kid is interrupting your learning of your other students. So the receptiveness of the people has been amazing because there's a perceived need of somebody please come help me. And then it's the skill level of the eight individuals that we have, which is why it's so important you got the best ones to be able to kind of, and I don't want to say it's that we're, but we're kind of like easing into the capacity building. So here I am to help you with this immediate need. But while I'm here, now we're starting to build a relationship. It starts with the relationship over, you know, Kenny, who is struggling. But that relationship starts to grow. And then once Kenny, you know, is okay, or Kenny moves on to another place, then now I have a relationship with this person. And they stop in and they check in and, oh, let's do this lesson together, let's do this together. So unlike co-teaching, which was more like a sign, here you are, you have to go there, this is more, you know, the teach, the kid drives the process and then the teacher and that co-starts to form a real relationship. To the point that they're emailing and they're texting. So it's very different than the co-teaching relationship, even though they do co-teach sometimes.
Awesome. And then so?
Can I just follow up on that, sort of back to my original question? I know we're talking about like a specific student originally bringing them in, but are the things that then that they're learning and keeping able to be, so this student today who normally has none of these issues, but, you know, for whatever reason is very upset thinking, you know, World War III is coming, whatever the case may be, can they then, is this helping them as teachers be able to see that student and say, hey, maybe we should put some of these calming things in? Do you need some time to, like, you're not normally, you're not going to run away, you're not going to do these other things, but you're not learning right now because you're whatever.
So in the upper left there, you'll see, that is actually a calming corner.
Right.
So that was something that was just introduced at Freedom. And they had, you know, some teachers who volunteered to do it. So now, those teachers who have those calming corners, they're doing that independently. So yes, the idea is, and I see that all the time, that even in the SAP process or in, you'll see, you'll see teachers who will try strategies that they may have never tried before, but they did it with the partnership of the behavior coach, so they feel more comfortable doing it independently.
They're also admitting class-wide things, you know, when they, when they talk to a teacher about, we were just at A to Packer today. teacher about, we were just at A S A Packer today, Kristen Jacobian, we presented on zones of regulation, but one of the teachers there, because of the need of a particular few students in her classroom, well, she's been implementing class-wide. So that teacher absolutely moving forward, has the capacity to assess every child on the spot as they do check-ins across the entire classroom. Would that develop that, or the trusting relationship working with that, those initial feelings?
Do you want to see the code?
I need a coach on call to come in.
So we thank you for your time tonight, and you're like great day's having.
Any other questions?
Great question. Thank you. Thank you, Coach, for being here.
All right, moving on to Street 0.05 Ascension, would you come here? I'm very curious about this. Yeah, I'm so curious about that, I disagree with you. All right. Are you future ready index data from spring?
It would have been a loss behind the times. I mean, the year. As response that came through the state of Pennsylvania from the federal government and its response to COVID, were some examples of really good strategies that government can help local school districts meet a need, give greater degrees of flexibility, understand exactly what's going on in their school, which is sort of the opposite of the future-ready index, which sort of arranges schools through one, you know, one score. You may remember Future Ready Index, and this is in the preamble of our data there, was established just 2018 on the verge of the pandemic. And the goal of it was, you know, to replace the single-mindedness of test scores with more of a market, shopping basket of different measures, including state test scores, but also career readiness measures, graduation rates, et cetera, to give a more accurate, complete view of student and school success. And the pandemic hit, so in 2019, 2020, that was March, that was right as we were getting into the spring testing window, essentially closed school for the rest of the year with person learning, so state testing was suspended at that time. Then we came back in 2020, 21, last year, with the hybrid, all right, half on, half off. And at that point, it was still optional of whether a parent would require or ask his child to take the test or not. And in that 2021 school year, a majority of BASD students opted out. If you look at the PSSAs, we have 16 elementary schools, we have English language, English language arts, math, and science, so 16 times three is 48 possible tests. Only five schools during that time had a test where the majority of students took it. So that was a clear view. Hanover twice had more than half of the, I guess students at Hanover liked taking the state tests, but the Miller Heights and also William, but clearly, the majority of students had opted out. So at that point, you know, the state was with a grain of salt, saying your Future Ready Index is going to be calibrated a different way. That can be damaging because, long-term, we have to make sure that we're treated fairly because part of the school improvement standards that the state uses for designating schools for improvement or comprehensive school improvement are in some ways derived from the Future Ready Index. But there's been so much turbulence in it, I think reporting the scores are what they are. So on this data, I'd like to thank Kim Marko for crunching a lot of numbers into one chart. You see two shaded areas, that's the, the more lightly shaded area is the percentage of students who are proficient or advanced on that particular assessment. And then the more dark, darkly shaded areas is the participation rate. Normally, the PSSA Keystone exams are expecting a 95% participation rate. So as you can see, we're below half of that. So to add meaning to this, if you look at A S A Packer, that first number, 74.6, represents, 74.6 of the 35.3% of the students who took the English Language Arts PSSA scored proficient or advanced. So I can't tell you exactly if there was a pattern among the students who took versus didn't take it. So you can't say it's a testing bias, you know, that only all the strong students took it, or only all the weak students took it. There didn't seem to be a pattern of, generally speaking, stronger students are more likely to gravitate towards taking standardized tests. But with such a small sample, nowhere near a 95% participation rate, I don't think we could use this to really judge anything other than, although it did stop the morning call and putting it in the newspaper on Saturday. But I did also thank the P S B A bulletin as far as caution on the, on what you see as far as the state assessments. The numbers here are from, are reflecting last year's that were taken in the spring, some of the fall of last 2021, or 2021 scores. This year, we are taking again more normal PSSA type of thinking, although parents still have the option. So we're going to have to see what the participation rate looks like in the spring of 2022. But things are inching more closely than normal. But these data, they are what they are.
Questions? Do you find that you're having conversations with the teachers in light of this, just cautionary grade inflation discussions?
They're class-wide, or they're stick, they're?
They're, yeah, they're, I'm thinking more of the higher level secondary courses.
You haven't had conversations about grade inflation related to standardized?
As a balance measure. So let's say that the state scores, because of the lack of participating and the morning call type article, I just, I just, I'm just wondering, do teachers feel pressure on some level? Or is there conversation on some level of needing to balance this out in some way? And I'm just worried about that.
My feeling is, I don't get the impression that our teachers are overly stressed right now as far as what the data coming from the last two interrupted years of state testing due to inflation and their standards or rates. Generally speaking, when the PSSA or the Keystone are running under a normal situation, I happen to like the idea of adding a benchmark at the state level that gives that, but I don't, I think teachers, like principals, even like parents, sort of understand what the last two years have been about. They're not using it to compare the quality of the.
I guess the other thing is, it's, where my head's going, and I'm sorry to be so difficult to articulate, but in years past, we've had a lot of test scores measure the value of the work of the teacher, you know? And so we have these conversations about, I'm edging myself, but it's no teaching to a test, et cetera. And so that's, that's where I'm going a little bit with this, is could this be our opportunity where test scores are just a measure of one component of what's going on? Could this actually be a moment where we could say, stop putting so much pressure on showing value with these things?
We have, we have, and that's never been our message.
Well, I'm also not, not your message. Sure.
So I think there's, I think we're pretty well disconnected from that, not completely, because certainly, we have much more specific ongoing measures, especially K5 on literacy and so forth, how we do look at it, that these measures are just going down.
But really, I, all I'm saying is, I just hope that the whole idea of that mess that we had 10 years ago, this is a moment to say, this is not an effective argument.
And I don't think we'll hear that from, that we supported that it ever was an effective argument. But if there's ever a time where you could see the limitations of evaluating a teacher or a school's quality on what a standard state measured, because the infleteness of the participation, the interruption of how the lines construction, now would be the time to think about that. But that's a policy issue that is involved right now and will lead back to school.
I wasn't going to say anything since you brought it up. Would this not be the opportunity to continue to encourage parents to opt out? Because parent choice is all we've heard from parents, parent choice, take off the mask, do whatever you want. It's parent choice. Who better to make a decision about their kids than parents? So why not encourage parents to say, enough of these tests, you know, we're spending money on SEO and everything else we can stress around it, but now sit down and take these stupid tests? Like, wouldn't this be the time to say, we didn't do it last year, kids are doing great, we have data to show we're doing, we know what we need to target, let's encourage parents to opt out again, and to continue to opt out year after year after year. And so these tests are meaningless because we didn't get these results for nine months, in our case, 10 or 12 months, where we have the real-time data that we just saw from Mrs. Harper and from Dr. Silva and Mr. James, like, that's useful because it's relevant.
I think you just made the case.
You just did.
And that may have been, that may have been true years ago when we didn't have the internal benchmarks or the internal measures, or we didn't know how to do that. But I can't think, when these data came out, there was, I didn't really look at, I looked at them because I wanted to, I was curious about what they would be. But if they'd inform any programmatic decisions, it's not going to evaluate any of the evaluations that Dr. Relais would give to the principals.
That's certainly not helpful when the, that doesn't, kids are a year older.
And even in a normal year, when the kid's taken an April day, we don't get results till October.
You sent some, you sent some anger there. Maybe we could get a behavior coach.
There's a few here. Can we go sit up for a word at casual?
The ones, the ones.
Your strategy's a good one, as long as they allow the opt-out and not to not reach the participation rate. But under federal law, there still is a participation rate, whether they enforce it or not, or don't give exemptions for it.
There is, but there's no teeth to, like, what would really happen if 80% of our parents said, we're not taking the test?
Can't do.
What are they going to do?
They can't, it's not like they can do it.
You know, if we learned anything in the past two years, it's parent choice is paramount. It's paramount of safety, it's paramount over what we know best for education, parent choice is paramount. So here it is. I said to not bend up.
But I see them entitled, pre-herd, but I see.
Pre-herd to testing.
Have you?
We know with regard to, with testing, whatever testing you want, but like, I mean that, like, in all seriousness, like, parent choice, we have learned from our elected officials in Harrisburg and in Washington, is the most important thing, because no one knows better than parents. So if parents are going to say, I want to opt-out kid out of PSSA testing, they should do it. But I mean, we should encourage it. And as this board, I think we should encourage parents to continue to opt out. I mean, we saw what happened last year, parents opted out, kids came to school this year, kids continue to learn, we know where they struggle, we have the real-time data that says it. I know as commissioned officers, you gentlemen can't speak to that, but as elected officials, we can hopefully speak to it, or I'll speak to it, I'm not speaking on behalf of the other eight people here. But I encourage parents to continue to opt out year after year after year. And if we have two, three years under our belt, why do we need these things? The amount of money that we spend in the state on standardized testing and across the country is astronomical. It was, I don't want to give the number, but I feel like it was close to like $50 million that the state spent. Am I right?
I think it's over, yeah, 56.
56 million dollars every year.
The time is, I've seen from Andy and my aunt at Tower Richards out there who spend a significant part of their adult lives arranging Keystone exams and tests. The time is also a factor that you avoid, that you don't have for instruction, or you don't have for intervention, or even in Richmond, you can take it. The only downside is, you know, purely what the state would impose on us as far as school improvement standards, or anything else that would derive from school.
Yeah.
Do we have any questions?
All right, thank you very much. Now, we're going to talk about Street 0.05 Ascension movie premiere. Okay. So I just wanted to share with you that the district will be partnering with Magellan, who is an organization that works with insurance and is helped by districts and parents to see services for students with disabilities and adults with disabilities. But they have the opportunity to bring to us the documentary movie called Maya Ascension. And it is a documentary that talks about 16-year-olds fighting with mental health and her attempted suicide. And from her thankfully not being successful in her attempt, but when she struggled and her mission in today, it has propelled her to be an advocate for mental health and to make people become more aware. So on Tuesday, May 3rd, starting at 5:30, we will be having the premiere at Liberty High School in the auditorium. And we will have community agencies set up with tables and resources. There will be also some social workers and counselors there to also talk with some individuals for that if the movie is too much. But we're going to be pulling in our groups from the high schools to help promote and be involved directly because we know that it's, it's an important message that we need to send, in that there is support and there is help out there for our kids. So you will start to see flyers around, and you'll see the ASD logo on, on the flyer as well.
So it's Maya Ascension.
It's Maya Ascension.
Ascension apparently is a movie, not People's Republic of China.
Yeah.
That is interesting, too.
That's really.
Well, I would like to share the final flyer that will go out. If you'd like to attend, you can register.
And I'd like to thank the alert group, you know, and everybody else that took this on, to reach out to the community during mental health awareness month. So I appreciate your time.
Any questions? Thank you. All right, that will bring us to the agenda items for the regular board meeting. That will be the elementary math curriculum adoption, which we discussed earlier. So we can move on to courtesy of the floor. Yeah, so on any topic.
I just can't resist this.
No math, all right?
Still Stephen Exhale. Coming all these meetings, it's amazing, the effort goes into education, it's really incredible. But I'm going to give you an idea of alternative education. You ready? In 1935, 1935, I went to first grade. And I attended an ethnic profial school. The teachers were European nuns who lived on the third floor. They were sequestered, and her job was to teach us. And did they teach us? And why did we learn? Because the alternative to learn was too painful. Either we got it on the fingertips with a ruler, or pulled, your hair got pulled, or you knelt in front of the class the whole day. Johnny Lujak, Joe Namath, and Unitas, all ethnic quarterbacks, probably went to profial school, and they all had bad knees. Clearly. But if you did something wrong, you paid a price. You wrote on a blackboard 500 times, I will talk in class, or I will do my homework. And you did it because the alternative was too painful. And we all survived. And all my fellow graduates did well. But anyway. But anyway, the one legacy I've gotten from Prophyl School is this, that I'm in a sense looking forward to the day I die, simply because the day, that minute that happens, I'm gonna find out something. I'm gonna find out whether to a third degree, third decimal point, I'm either going to have my hand, or it was all a fairy tale.
The other fellow comment, courtesy of the floor. Um, we can move on to open forum, any topics?
Super quick, just as we were talking about so many things that have required additional funding this year, like coaching and tutoring, um, the governor was just in Allentown earlier today to talk about his budget, which, um, includes about 1.2 billion in new basic education funding, it includes about 300 million in Level Up support, it suggests some charter reforms, includes additional money for special education, um, put, roll all that together for Bethel Area School District, it would give almost 20 million in basic education funding increase and nearly 10 million in special education funding increase. Um, and so, um, just be ready as the season goes on to, to support his budget. Um, this morning, state reps and, um, superintendents from Allentown and, uh, school board members from Allentown are all talking about the specific impact on Allentown, which would be great, but this would, is something that would bring almost 100, I'm trying to do quick math in my head, about $130 million into the Lehigh Valley to support, increased support for basic education funding. So, um, in keeping with that, next Tuesday, 4 o'clock at City Hall in Allentown, is a vigil about fair funding, to sort of spend some time contemplating what the lack of funds means for students and schools and districts and the communities in which they're in, and then also to advocate on behalf of this kind of support for those, for those things. So just, yeah.
Anyone else?